Good morning, everybody. We call to order our October 3, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Mason County Commissioners. I'll begin with our pledge of allegiance this morning. Chief Hansen, if you would like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the clerk would please take the roll.
Commissioner, District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner, District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner, District Three, Terry Drexler.
Here.
Okay. And moves us to item four, Correspondence and Organizational Business, 4.1. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
There's actually no correspondence to report this week.
Okay. Makes it easy. Item 4.2, we have proclamation for 4-H Week that I will now read. National 4-H Week. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost 6 million youth across the country thus far, and whereas 4-H has helped more than 1,500 youth in Mason County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders, and whereas 4-H is delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing in hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship, and whereas National 4-H Week showcases the incredible experiences that 4-H offers young people and highlights the remarkable 4-H youth in Mason County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them, and whereas 4-H's network of 600,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4-Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore, we, the Mason County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 1 through 7, 2017, as National 4-H Week throughout Mason County, and encourage all our citizens to recognize 4-H for the significant impact they have made and continue to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime, dated this third day of October, 2017. Congratulations to all the 4-H members in Mason County, and special thanks to our extension staff who helped make it possible. Commissioners, any comments?
Special thanks to Dan Tutterberg. You've really brought our 4-H organization through a lot of tough times, and you guys have excelled, and I really appreciate the extra effort that you've put to the Mason County 4-H.
Throughout the years, it's always been amazing how much they actually do learn. People have no idea that you teach them everything, not just about animals and stuff, but even business, and how to survive the long life that they may have before them. Some of the stuff you teach them, very much appreciated.
Very good. Item number 4.3, Public Works Bid Award Information. Jerry?
Good morning, Board. Jerry Howe, Public Works Department. As you know, our chip spreader was a little suspect this past summer. We weren't quite certain if we were going to get through our projects. We did. However, on July 24, we came in and requested authorization to purchase a new chip spreader for the upcoming years. We had a bid date of August 17, and we received one bid from PacWest Machinery out of Kent. Their bid was $293,883.10, which is below the engineer's estimate of $307,055. So we have awarded it to PacWest, and look forward to having a new piece of equipment here.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Item 4.4, we have a report from Cheryl Haywood of the Timberland Regional Library.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity. Before I get started, I would like to have the library managers introduce themselves.
I am Donna Federn. I am the manager of the Shelton and Hootsport Timberland Libraries.
And I'm Jenny Grenfell. I'm the manager of the North Mason Library and Bell Fair.
Welcome.
You have a folder in front of you with several flyers and booklets about some of the initiatives that we are currently working on. I want to highlight, the first one, though, happened this past summer with the Summer Reading Program, which looks like this. So you can see photos of some of the kids involved in some of the programs. Build a Better World was the theme of the Summer Reading Program this year, which ran from June 1 to August 31. Families were treated to comedy acts, live music, and magic shows, a program called WonderWorks, which features activities that build math, and science, and creative thinking skills, along with a program called Hour of Code, where participants learn the basics of coding. This was the first year the program was offered online, enabling kids who could not come to the library to sign up and earn prizes for completing activities. This was also the first summer where adults could participate. What's very interesting about the handout is the bottom of the handout. You can see, in terms of the numbers, we had over 13,000 children and teens sign up. We had 32,378 people attend the events. We had over 1,000 events at the 27 libraries. And most important are the outcomes. If you can look at the bottom of that sheet, we had 319 people and about 300 families who took a survey, and so the percentages are there. So 92% maintained or increased reading skills during the summer. 70% are now more confident readers. 67%, they read more often, and 65% use the library more often. So that's what we want to see as we move forward in time, our outcome-based measurements. You have another flyer in your folder, photos of the Hootsport remodel. This was a remodel that should have been just about a carpet, and it ended up being a lot more than that, because we discovered there were no joists, and the floor was caving in in different places, and there was no insulation. So what turned out to be, was supposedly to be a very minor project, ended up being a very major project, and we ended up hiring a company in town to create these joists. We needed 17 very specific types of joists for the floors. So, you know, when you do your carpet, you might as well do the paint, and so we did the paint, and a few other upgrades, and so those are the photos taken during and slightly after the remodel. So we encourage you to visit the Hootsport Timberland Library. I like to call it a little boutique library. It's quite stunning.
This is the one that was barged up the penalti.
This is a library that was recycled. The building was recycled in 1997 or '98. We cut it into three. It came from Belfair. We put it on a barge. It made national news. And then we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars by recycling the building. Yes, thank you for that reminder. You also have a brochure in your packet about Timberland Reads Together, and we are encouraging everyone to read three books by Reyna Grande. Reyna will be talking at several different events that are mentioned in the brochure. I also want to mention that she will be speaking exclusively to high school students at Shelton High School on October 26.
Six.
And Donna will be there with her staff. You also have another flyer with you about the Microsoft Office Certification Test Sites. We are beginning this November 1, and this means that one library in each of our counties will be offering a site for residents to take Microsoft Office Certification tests. Jenny is leading it in Mason County with North Mason Timberland Library and Belfair. There is a test fest, we call it that, on November 7, where she has 30 slots, morning, midday, and evening, and these tests cost about $100 apiece, and we are getting vouchers from the State Library for people to take the test for free. So information is on that flyer, and we will be putting out a news release very shortly about it as well. So we're very excited about that, because the only place to take a test right now is in Olympia. So if you live in Packwood, or you live in Ocean Park, or you live in Belfair, you have to drive into Olympia to take the test. Wanted to mention, too, that our Internet access for the public has increased to four hours a day if there's no other people who want to use it, and I also want to remind people that it's 100 free printouts of pages a week with Internet access. And also, the State Library has approached us to be a pilot program for Oculus. Oculus is owned by Facebook. Oculus are the virtual reality headsets, and we're going to be getting 20 licensed software on the headsets, and they want us to pilot it in two of our communities, and Shelton will be one of them. So that will be the pilot, begins around the winter holidays this year, and will go on for probably four to six months next year. The I-School, which is the library school at University of Washington, will be involved in the academic research part of this, and they will be producing a white paper on that next July. And lastly, I wanted you to know, as the representative for community-based organizations on the Workforce Development Council called PAC Mountain, Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council, we submitted a breakout session at the upcoming state conference in November 7 and 8. So the State Library, Timberland Regional Library, and PAC Mountain will be doing a breakout session on how public libraries can help people with workforce development needs. So that's quite exciting. That's my report.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On that last topic, how is the launch of the, having the employment search happening in your libraries?
So you're referring to the American Job Center Network, and you're referring to Timberland Regional Library becoming a connection site?
Yes.
So the application was due the end of August. We submitted it several days in advance, and we will know by November 10 if we are part of the American Job Center Network. I'm on the board, as I just mentioned, and I will recuse myself from that vote, because obviously it's about Timberland. So, and I have recused myself from this process. So I don't know where they are in the process. I know that they're vetting it. I know that there's at least four to eight different entities that have applied to become part of the network, and we will know November 10. If the answer is yes, then it would start January 1 for three years. And if the answer is no, we will continue doing the work we've been doing for 49 years, helping people find jobs.
And then the Microsoft classes. Is there an income eligibility threshold that must be met to receive the voucher?
Not that I am aware of.
No.
No.
Okay. And then lastly, the virtual reality headsets.
Yes.
What is the research that's, what is the question they're trying to answer through the research on that?
I don't know yet, but I would assume it's immersive educational training. I don't have the list yet of all the 20 different games on it. What I do know is that one is, you're going to follow your blood in the human body, so you know how your blood moves in the body. I know that there's one about underwater stuff. I know that there's one put out by National Geographic. I'm not sure the subject matter. There's one on cultural sensitivity training, so that you are a different ethnicity, and what's it like to move through the world like that. And the fifth one that I'm aware of is, if you know how to write code, you can create your own virtual reality. And that's what got the business community really excited when I spoke about it two weeks ago, because that would enable people to create their own virtual reality when it comes to training.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I'll be a customer of that one. Curious to see how that works out.
Yes.
I've never actually done the virtual reality thing, but I've watched a lot of videos and watched them scream and yell.
Yes, you're like this. You're like this, right?
Yeah. Hopefully this won't be anything like that.
No.
It's a real shock.
Right. Congratulations on the Hootsport Library.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number five. This is our open forum for citizen input. If there's a member of the public that would like to address the commission on items not on today's agenda, they can come forward now and do so. Just come to the podium, and the chair will recognize you.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Morning, Commissioners. Kevin Hansen, jail chief, or the sheriff. I come to talk to you guys today about the justification for the jail population cap. There's been some talk in the community about why we're doing it, the meaning, the reasoning behind it. So I spent a little bit of time this last week putting together a document.
Yeah, actually, so item number nine would be for department heads.
Is that what you want me to do?
Yeah, I think that would be a, yeah, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Do you mind hanging, do you have time to hang?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any citizens?
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerry Eckard, 27210, North US Highway 101, Hootsport, Washington. Why I come today is I am very interested in understanding or finding out what vision and communication the commission has handed down to the staff. As we go into the ballot with the tax measure on it, I very much like to know what priorities you have set for those departments. I know you had a retreat in February, which was prior to any announcement of budget cuts and whatnot. Have you shared the results of that retreat and those focus items with the staff? The larger the organization, the more important the sharing of where you're going and what you expect to establish, and the end result. So with that, how have you shared that information with the department heads and the elected so that they can guide their departments in concert with your vision and where you want to go? I requested a copy of a strategic plan, vision, and goals, and I got the results of the retreat. So with that in mind, I have not been involved in the conversations you've had with your budget discussions and whatnot. I just know that there is still some controversy there. There are things that support RCWs that are a must. The commitment we made for prioritization was to focus on serving the public. So when we have these cuts that affect RCWs and department heads and electeds come and bring those to your attention, it's important that that's considered in your vision, your plan, your strategic thrust. Spending priorities and how the spending priorities meet those RCWs and service of public, I would expect that would be a justification that you require from the departments for their increase or their spending for the coming year. And we know we don't have a bunch of money. We know we're not going to be able to meet everything, but what are those top things that we must meet? And how are we communicating those to the public? What I'm hearing on the street is there was a commitment when we first, when the people testified that they would support a budget or a tax increase, they said was for public safety and criminal justice and whatnot. So now I understand the general fund needs to be put in there, because after all, the Sheriff's Department and criminal justice, all that comes from general fund. I understand that. But it does not negate the need to set the priorities of what and how you're going to spend the money should it be approved. And I think failure to identify that will result in a rejection of that request for taxing fees. I like to come with a bit of a solution, and I will share, I will hand this off to you, Commissioner Schutie. If we look on the website, and we, on PUD-1's website, they have an excellent model of how they have communicated. There are six priorities for the year, which typically continue on, and how each department and owner engages and measures that requirement. That would be a major consideration for, you know, what you want to accomplish in the coming years. In the coming year and then beyond, you build off that. It's not complicated. It's, it's, it's very simple, and I'll just put up an example. They identify their top priorities. They identify what it is. PUD-1 has water and electricity, so their top two are water and electricity. And what are the things that they are doing to move towards better serving that objective? And that is something that is clearly communicated to all of their people, department heads as well as elected. And oh, by the way, if I'm just a worker bee, I could go on there, and I could find out, too. It's communication. It's commitment. It's clear direction. And that's what I'm asking from the commission, that you have that communication, that clear direction, those priorities set. Easier said than done, a long process, but it's time to get started. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment? Thank you. Commissioner, would you mind passing that down? Okay, seeing no one else for comment at this time, move on to item number six, which is adoption of today's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt today's agenda as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. Item number seven, approval of minutes. There are minutes from September 11, 2017's briefing.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the minutes, September 11, 2017 briefing minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September 11, 2017 briefing. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moves us to item number eight, which is approval of today's action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda, at which time a member of the public or a commissioner can have an item removed for a separate discussion vote. I will read items 8.1 through 3. If Commissioner Netherland would please do 8.4 and 5, and Commissioner Drexler, 8.6 and 8.7. Item 8.1, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October 24, 2017, at 6:30 PM to receive public comment on the private line occupancy permit for a new utilities crossing under North Shore Road for 5181 Northeast North Shore Road, parcel number 22210-52-01905. 8.2, approval of the revised Small Works Consulting and Vendor Roster Resolution that replaces Resolution Number 62-14 and amends Chapter 3.48 of the Mason County Code. Item 8.3, approval of the interlocal agreement with Fire District 18 authorizing services provided by the Public Works Department for vehicle, road, or site maintenance, engineering, survey, GIS, emergency assistance, sign fabrication, fueling, and material supply.
Mr. Chairman, item number 8.4 reads, approval to authorize the deputy director of Utilities and Waste Manager to sign Amendment Number 1 for crane walkway and stair repair design by HDR Engineering Incorporated as part of the Eels Hill Transfer Station Design Improvement Project. Item number 8.5, approval of Amendment Number 1 of the 2017 Memorandum of Agreement, Appendix A between Washington State University Extension and Mason County.
Item 8.6, approval of the warrants. Claims clearing fund warrants numbers 8051230 through 8051504 totaling $1,892,924.40. The direct deposit fund warrants numbers 44186 through 44561 totaling $657,520.50. And then the salary clearing fund warrants number 7003082 through 773114 totaling $495,112.52 per grand total of $3,45,566.97. Finally, item 8.7, approval of Amendment Number 1 on Professional Services Contract Number NWR-2017.1 between Northwest Resources, Inc. and Mason County. This amendment increases the total award amount by $2,000 with an effective date of October 1, 2017 through June 30, 2017.
Very good, thank you. At this time, is there a member of the public or a commissioner that would like an item removed for a separate discussion and vote?
Can we remove 8.7? I just have a question.
Okay.
Do you want me to ask right now, or?
Sure.
What, this is the one that we just passed, right? The last week, we did this, we passed it last week, we passed the original last week. And so now we're asking for $2,000 more, and I just wondered what that was for.
Todd, would you like clarifying?
Yeah, sure. Well, it was a contract that was awarded back, starting July 1. So it was approved in June at that time, and so it's increased the transportation for client services, mental health, and some chemical dependency treatment needs. And so they just need, the transportation costs are going up, and they just need more money to get people to and from treatment places, so that's what it was specifically for.
Okay, thank you.
Is that cleared?
It does.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Okay. Any other items to be removed for a separate voter discussion? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the action agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the action agenda as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Move on to item number nine, which is other business, chance for department heads and elected officials to come forward and address the commission. Please, appreciate your patience.
All right. Okay, Kevin Hansen, jail chief, or the sheriff. I just wanted to take an opportunity today to discuss with the commission and the members of the commission and the public about the jail cap, and about the need for a jail cap, and about the reasoning behind a jail cap. So, the jail has 74 general population male inmate beds, and they have 20 female inmate beds, for a total bed count of 94. That's not counting holding cells or the alternative sanctions or alternative sentencing program. Jail is originally built and designed for 48 prisoners. Throughout the years, additional bunks were added and remodeling occurred, resulting in the current bed count of 94. In April 2016, I became aware of confusion by some members of the Board of County Commissioners on how many beds actually existed in the facility. So on April 24, we gave, we gave a tour to the Board of County Commissioners, the members, and we actually counted beds, and we came up with 94. Today, members of the community are still telling us that some members of the BACC are confused about the number of inmate beds, and have stated the jail has plenty of space and staff to not necessitate a reduced inmate population cap and booking restrictions. In 2017, the 2017 approved jail budget, which is a sub-budget under the sheriff, was approved by the Board of County Commissioners at $4,973,427. In June 2017, the BACC announced a seven and a half mid-year budget reduction, cutting the jail budget by almost 500, well, by $530,000. Of the $4.9 million budgeted for 2017, $3.4 million is for salaries and benefits, which are exclusively negotiated between the Corrections Deputy Union and the Board of County Commissioners. The sheriff doesn't have any control over that. $700,000 of that is spent on medical services, $200,000 for inmate food, $200,000 for overtime and holiday pay. That leaves only $400,000 for ER and R and inmate supplies, operating supplies, training, et cetera. The point of that statement is that there's very little discretionary spending available to us to make a $500,000 cut, short of cutting personnel. So since September 2016, the jail staff is concentrating on efficient, safe operations. We managed to reduce the inmate food costs from $450,000, that was budgeted in 2016, to less than $200,000 by contracting services from private industry. We eliminated $300,000 that was budgeted in 2016 in outsourcing expenses by opening the remodel and housing our own females on site. And with the cost savings efficiencies realized by the jail staff, we opened the alternative sentencing area four months early without BACC funding. The jail has 31 uniform corrections deputy positions, two support staff positions, three community service officers, one lieutenant, and one chief. The 2016 average jail population was 130 inmates. The minimum staffing to manage this population while maintaining custody, security, and control of the prisoners in a safe, efficient, and constitutional manner is four deputies, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That consists of one control room operator, one supervisor, and two corrections deputies to manage the facility. During the mid-year 2017 cuts, we had five vacant deputy positions that we're in the process of hiring for and filling. Those five vacant positions equated to an annual expense of $425,000. Faced with the draconian non-emergent and excessive mid-year cuts, we had very limited options and had to unfund the vacant corrections deputy positions. This resulted in a 15% reduction of our jail staff. As some may know, it takes roughly five employees to cover one eight-hour shift, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This reduc- This reduction forced us to reduce our minimum staffing by one eight-hour position on night shift from, uh, from four deputies to three, often leaving one supervisor, one control room operator, and one corrections deputy in the jail to manage a hundred inmates between the hours of twenty-two-hundred and zero-six-hundred. To manage the general, uh, inmate population above ninety-four, we need to have our full complement, complement of staff. The sheriff's obligation is to provide safe, efficient, effective working and living conditions for our jail staff and inmates while protecting our community. Um, we cannot keep our inmates, community, and staff safe while managing the same number of inmates with fifteen percent less staff. With the reduction of staff, we were forced to reduce the inmate population cap proportionately, resulting in a new cap of eighty inmates from ninety-four. The only way to manage a jail population cap is by carefully selecting who takes priority for the jail beds during the jail acceptance process. People who are an imminent threat to community safety will always have a bed. People contacted, are contacted for minor offenses will be allowed to self-report to the courts. People committing serious crimes against others will always be booked. But people committing property crimes will generally be referred to the prosecutor's office. Despite our desire to fulfill our mission and due to circumstances beyond the sheriff's control, without proper funding, staffing, and facility space, the jail's essential purpose cannot be fulfilled and public safety is compromised. Any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
There was five unfilled positions that were cut during the last cut.
In July?
Yes. Uh, how many, uh, that were already hired and already working were cut?
Zero.
And, uh, are you aware that, uh, you know, I appreciate your numbers, what you're saying, but are you aware that when we did the expansion on the jail at the sheriff's department's request, that if we expended this money, we were told, and it's all in, in minutes, brought up, that we would increase the population from one-twenty-one standard to one-forty-four with, uh, utilizing boats and stuff like that, but that would bring our population up to one-forty-four if we were to expend that money? Are you aware of any of that?
I was not involved in those conversations, but I will tell you, I did some research on that. In two thousand six, the average daily population in the jail was eighty-six prisoners. And the sheriff then, which was not Sheriff Salisbury, uh, put a population cap, an arbitrary population cap on the jail of a hundred inmates. And what he says was, anything above a hundred, put a population cap on. So then shortly after is when the D.S.U. was, um, was done in two thousand six, which added forty-four beds. So therefore, that's how we came up with the number of a hundred and forty-four. We don't have a hundred and forty-four beds. We took you for a tour, we counted the beds, and there's ninety-four beds in the jail, not counting holding cells, not counting boats, and not counting short-term housing. You can't count those as beds. I need those cells for people who come in who are drunk, who are wanting to fight our staff, and we need to have the availability to help, to not house people there.
And again, this number of the one-forty-four was after that, that renovation back then. Matter of fact, that same area is what was renovated with this money, but we were promised a hundred and forty-four beds, excuse me. On top of that, did you know that we were also explained that, uh, we will help to pay for this because we bond out, that by increasing the Swift and Certain funds up to seven-hundred-and-fifty K. a year? These things are all factors. Now, I do know that we did get a threat at one point when we were doing the go, not even negotiations, when it came to the race of an elected official, that if we didn't do this, they would cut that Swift and Certain. We did get some other, you know, threats that were given to us at the same time. I understand where you're coming from, but there are, there is more to what was promised to us. Now, is it possible that now that we've had some changes? Uh, I'm actually been thinking about it and realizing, I think what we did was just move the chairs around because I think that downstairs D.S.U. unit that was left unmanned was probably, because it was way before I came here, was probably set up to handle the same customers we're now doing upstairs.
No.
Okay, because I don't know what that was for, but it was an empty use. But either way, we were promised these beds if we were to do this. So that's something that we got to, we began to count on. Now, as we went through this process where they started getting shipped out and coming back, in my opinion, it was changed because of some different issues and anger that have come along when it comes to wages. But at the same time, perhaps maybe then we should not have, uh, used the beds for this other type of care and custody upstairs. I don't know. But what are all the beds and how many should we have in there with all the beds, including the care and custody upstairs?
There's a hundred and twelve beds.
Hundred and twelve, and then there's usually boats?
No, there's no boats. We don't, we can't count boats as beds, Commissioner.
No, but you can't count boats for, for handling the people. We've handled as many as a hundred and fifty-one in that jail before the renovation.
And guess what? We're not going to manage that jail with three people walking over the, walking over the backs of inmates on the floor, sleeping on beds in, in the dayroom. That ain't gonna happen anymore, Commissioner.
And you have, you have thirty-one, you said, right?
Thirty-one what?
Thirty-one, uh,
Uniform corrections deputies.
Correction officers. Okay, so what is that? That's six?
Six what?
Full-time that, that could be available?
I don't get your question.
Five, five bodies per shift.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you take vacation, which you guys have negotiated those contracts.
That's why there's five.
With the amount of leave, sick leave, holiday pay, comp time out of that, it takes five corrections deputy positions to cover one eight-hour shift, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, uh, the minimum staffing is three. And there's often times we have people out on light duty, throughout a medical, medical leave, they're on a F.M.L.A., they're on vacations, and we're down to three people working that jail with a hundred inmates on a night shift.
And I understand that three times five is fifteen, uh, and that's taking that into account, but, uh, so no, I know, because I, I understand some of this, this is directed at me. And the thing is, is I've just told you what I know as being a commissioner here also, and I'm entitled to my opinion just, just as well.
You are.
That's been an issue all the way through this.
But I can tell you that, um, I don't, I don't know what's happened in the past. I can only talk, talk from what's happened since, since September of last year when I came here. And, um, and from the readings of, uh, the, the King Report in two thousand six, that's where I got my data and my information from, I related to you, about the hundred and a hundred and forty-four. Um, the, that jail was not being ran properly. Uh, we had, we had maximum security prisoners housed with minimum security prisoners. That ain't happening anymore because guess what? I'm not gonna lose my house and use the sheriff. So, um, we are here to protect the inmates, we're here to protect the staff, and we're here to protect this community, and ultimately, we're here to protect you guys too by writing a safe jail that is constitutional.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Under Sheriff Barrett, I'm gonna make some comments prior to what Chief Hanson had to deal with. When we go back to those original bed designs, when we go back to the original construction, which was well over three years, three and a half years ago that took there, there was identified blind spots in the construction, so bunks had to be removed. There was unidentified areas that could not be safely housed, uh, for inmates that had to be removed. Those numbers fluctuated back and forth. We told you that one-forty-four at the time included holding cells. It included everything. It included every possible bed that could be used in that facility. Those numbers were then modified based on construction identifications, which we didn't have any control over. We had the state L.E.M.A.P. team come in and give recommendation of those issues. Chief Spurling went over there as an interim and identified issues and worked with the construction and facility folks. So this number moved back and forth. We also have to remember that during that time, we attempted to get alternative sentencing. Clearback as early as twenty thirteen, alternative sentencing was mentioned. It wasn't until a year and a half ago that it was finally approved. We started to hire. That's the first employee that was hired under that. Then it was removed from the budget. Then we had to come in and do a negotiation on food services contract to reinstitute that. Otherwise, that upstairs wouldn't even be used right now. So to go out there and use old numbers without context of how we got, where we got, through construction design, through experts coming in and giving us advice, through litigation that pointed out issues, through change in personnel and staff, through change of correctional philosophies to move to our alternative sentencing programs, to conversations with judges and prosecutors, to outsourcing contracts, to D.O.C. Swift and Certain contracts, without providing all that context in a three-year window of how we went from an empty facility to where we are now, isn't fair to the public, nor to the people who are trying to supervise these inmates and run things. So I don't mind providing opinions. I got zero problems with that. What I have a problem with is when you don't provide a timeline of context that gets us to where we're at. And this person and that staff is running this jail as efficiently and effectively, given the staff, the budget, and the changes in law, the P.R.I.A. issues, the mental health issues, the alternative sentencing programs. He is doing the best with his staff and leadership to possibly do. And to go out there and make intimations that that's not happening is not genuine and it's not accurate. So if we're going to speak to the issues, let's speak with the context of how we got here. And this thing evolved over a twenty-five-year period. It started well before this sheriff ever took office. We've got historical context going way, way back, and we have been trying to find a way to make it safe, effective, efficient. So there is a lot of issues, and we hoped in inviting the board over along with Director Pinter that we would be able to identify perhaps, in one of the architectural designs, a closet was actually identified as a holding cell. Okay, these are the things that we hope we would get to common understanding with numbers. So to throw numbers back and forth without the constructional limitations that we had that changed, removing of beds to eliminate blind spots, to place cameras, boom. And to lay all the jail woes on one sheriff or one administration without going back to when Bob Holter talked about this as sheriff, when Sheriff Shepard talked about this, when Sheriff Wybark talked about this, this has been a long-term problem, which is why it's been one of the main focuses for the criminal justice working team, the judges, and everybody else. So if we're going to talk, let's talk about accurate numbers and the changes those numbers.
And Under Sheriff, the numbers I use are only a couple of years old. I don't know about twenty-five years, and I'd be more than happy to sit down and see if you want to explain to me the differences and what's changed. Uh, in a heartbeat, I would, I've always made myself.
We will, we will walk you back over again and show you where things have been removed and what bunks and how these beds have changed. That offer is always open. It's your facility. If you need to come over and take a look at how we're managing your facility, we're more than willing to make that accommodation.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So how did the logistics, you have, let's start with the number ninety-four beds. Now, how does, how do the logistics of the number of available beds change? In, in essence, if you have, uh, a criminal, say you're full, and you bring in a hardened criminal, how does that change the logistics of the number of beds you have available?
Well, we only have so many, do you want me to get back up there?
Sure. We only have so many, uh, maximum security cell, uh, beds and minimum security beds and medium security beds. So her question was, what happens when we bring somebody in that's a maximum security prisoner? What, how does that affect the population? Well, obviously, I can't house that person with a minimum security person. I'm not gonna put a murderer in, in jail with somebody that's in there for noval. So I have to find a bed somewhere for that guy. And, and typically, uh, in our facility and to facilities statewide, that's, that's the real estate that is lacking is the, the individual rooms with the individual places to put people and to segregate them. Um, so, so that means that we have to do some juggling around and, and find a place for him.
Or kick,
Or kick somebody out.
That two-person room turns into one, which affects your overall number.
Correct. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Sheriff?
Three things I wanted to comment on. First, um, Frank and Commissioner Shutey, and Karen's not here. Certainly appreciate, um, Commissioner bringing that meeting together last week. The last couple of weeks, we've had a standoff also on the budget issues and how they were submitted. Just as the Under Sheriff said, and I mentioned last time, you have to understand the context and how things happen. Now, it's just an end result. We were able to sit down and discuss that with Mr. Pinter, with Commissioner Shutey, and with Karen. And it appears at this time that our budget is now going to be documented like everyone else's. And I certainly appreciate those adjustments being made, Frank, and, and taking the time, Mr. Shutey, to bring the groups together so that it will be, um, the same format for the sheriff's office now that it is for the rest of the county budget. And I appreciate that, and there were some other things worked out in that meeting. So, uh, thank you to Auditor Herr and, uh, Mr. Pinter and, and Mr. Shutey and the rest of the folks that were in the room for that, that discussion from both, both staffs. So that, I think that was a real plus. And it's unfortunate some of these things have to be an end result without an explanation, and then it all goes up in arms. So I think that's been worked out, and, uh, I, I think we'll be set for, uh, putting our budget in this time. Thank you for that. Secondly, um, as many of you know, we've been working on that, the Emery case, as it's become known. Um, and, and the, there's expenses, tremendous expenses involved in that case. And, um, it does not cover everything, nor will it come close to covering everything. But I want to thank our chiefs that went out and, uh, worked for the International Crimes Against Children and submitted documents and paperwork that, um, we'll bring back to the county. Again, it's not going to cover all of it or even come close. But we're gonna bring back to the county, uh, through those grant processes and working a, as a task force of that, twenty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents that the county won't have to be spending out. Now, there are more, it, it costs a lot more than that. There's other expenses. This isn't covering it. But I think the work of the chiefs on that, um, uh, their time, energy, and effort in that brought back twenty-six thousand to cover, um, law enforcement officers overtime into that, as I explained. Also, it should be noted that, uh, as we joined, uh, the task force, because Mason County used so much of that, we are no longer, we, we, we are no longer gonna receive money from them because we use so much in a one, in a one-time period in a year that was granted. So, um, our ability to obtain that money again, uh, at least this year, maybe not in the future, but for right now, is now gone because so much of it was used in Mason County. So, uh, thank you to the chiefs, uh, in the sheriff's office. One here, Chief Spurling, and the other chiefs that were able to sit down and, and work on that issue and, and so that we could get some of that money back from the International Crimes Against Children. Um, this case is not over with, and it could go on for a long time. Therefore, there will be other expenses. But again, that was one area that our chiefs were able to pull that back in. Um, last thing, and I mentioned it several times. Last week, we were able to recognize those folks in Public Works that helped us on that case. We will probably need more help from them in the future. And, um, uh, last week, um, Chief Eric and I, um, had the honor of going to Nashville, Tennessee, not paid for by the county, but paid for by, uh, National Special Olympics to attend the International Special Olympics Conference. Um, I know that, um, Chief was, was very involved in that, and I thank you for helping us get involved in that, but to recognize the Special Olympics athletes and to learn better how we can do more to raise money for our athletes in Mason County. And so it was just an honor to be, uh, asked to go back there and represent, or be one of the representative, um, for the state of Washington, representing to the international community. And there were people there from, um, Australia, people there from, um, Jamaica. Personally spent most of my time there with an officer from Taiwan, all working on the same thing, all law enforcement officers all throughout the world, raising money for special needs athletes. So it was an honor to be there and, uh, and thank you for that. And we hope that this spring, as we, as we head towards that, we'll even bring more money in for the athletes and our Special Olympics at Mason County. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've gotten every elected and department head in today, so, uh, I think we can move on to, uh, there is no, there are no public hearings today, so we can move on to item eleven, which is board reports and calendar. Uh, Commissioner Nelland, if you would please start, Commissioner Drexler, and then I will finish.
Okay, uh, started off, uh, moral hall meeting, uh, very early in the morning, good group of people. I really think they're really working well together. I enjoy meeting with them. North Mason Chamber Commerce Luncheon, who, uh, Officer Ellis was recognized up in the North Mason region. He's, he's such a hero to all of us up there, but he was recognized at that North Mason Chamber Luncheon. Uh, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. We, I also went to that, uh, what's the name of that place next to Sisters, the Blue Moon?
Brilliant Moon.
Brilliant Moon. I went there for their little event. It was wonderful. I ended up buying almost thirty dollars worth of spices and teas and stuff. Uh, they're so knowledgeable. The stuff she started explaining to me, I couldn't help but say yes and keep buying. Uh, so I think they're gonna be successful if they can keep that up. Uh, briefings, and then, uh, left board meeting. Also, this next week, we have, after this, we have our employee recognition. Uh, E.D.C. is having a hiring event with, uh, certain board members. The ARC meeting is tonight. The Allen-Belfair, uh, Cooperative Meeting is, uh, Wednesday. I'll be meeting with that gentleman, that young kid Spencer Prude again with, uh, School District and Relay for Life. I will be attending the Women's Republican Meeting also. Uh, A.C.A., Allen Community Association meetings, having meetings next week. The kids at North Mason Soccer is having a big tournament and a dinner for everybody, in case any of you are gonna be there. Food and fellowship, and briefings. Brings us back to our meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let's see. Last week, I attended a joint meeting with the Planning Advisory Committee on the comp plan updates. I attended the Thurston Economic Development Council's Commercial Real Estate Forum, and then Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on Aging, a regular board meeting. Had a special meeting with our mobile outreach team, telecare, behavioral health organization staff, and the emergency room department staff of Mason General Hospital to coordinate services, to work together, and came up with some new options for that as well. I had spent a tremendous amount of time with the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on Aging on some, a number of issues that are happening at that organization. We had our commission briefings yesterday and budget workshop. And then following today's meeting, I will also be attending the employee service awards. We're recognizing a number of employees who have been here for 15-plus years. We even have one who's celebrating 30-year anniversary. Tomorrow, we'll have budget workshops, and then a Mason Transit Authority budget workshop. And then I'll spend the rest of the week setting up and working Oyster Fest, and then I'll bring it back to commission meetings on Monday.
Thank you. Last week, in addition to the joint planning commission meeting, I also had a meeting with Superintendent Sean Batstone and Marty Brewer from Hood Canal and Pioneer School District, talking about their cooperative high school plan. And we had a conversation involving our planning staff to help them kind of understand some of the, some of the things that they're going to need to do as this proposal moves forward and have an understanding of, you know, just the whole process. They, they are able to get support for that and move forward. They can do so and do it in an efficient way. Also had the budget workshops yesterday. Following today's meeting, I'll have a phone conversation with the Department of Agriculture, who will now be taking over the responsibilities of the statewide Shellfish Initiative. So, talking about some of their, their plans for that. I know they, they're very excited to have that housed under the Department of Agriculture now. So looking forward to that conversation. Have the employee service awards later this afternoon, and then meeting with Judge Goodell over in Superior Court. Tomorrow, budget workshops, and then I have a meeting with Joel Baxter from Olympia Master Builders. Also be at the Mason County Republican Women's Luncheon on Friday. Then, back here to meet with Amanda Reed from the Capital Land Trust. And then, Oyster Funk on Friday night, a new, new event sponsored by Shelton Rotary, my rotary club, Skookum. And so, we, we're now, it's good to see a little bit more of a collaborative effort there from, from the two rotaries. And so we'll be hosting the Oyster Funk on Friday night. It's a good time. Come out 21 and over, I understand, good music, good oysters, great oysters, and so come out and.
Barbecue.
And barbecue. And so, look forward to seeing everybody out there on Oyster Funk. I will not be in on Monday, but I'll be back Tuesday morning for our meeting.
Tricia, I'd like to just have a little conversation about one of our open forum discussions, in which there was an assumption that the retreat we had earlier this year was a, was a priority setting of a vision, vision mission. I just wanted to clarify, it was more of a work plan setting for the year. It wasn't the broader scope of, of setting priorities of Mason County government. It was the priority of our work for the year. So I just wanted to make that clear to folks, that there was, you know, a number of little projects that we wanted to ensure that we were continuing on forward through the year to get them through. And I thank you, Commissioner Shutey, for highlighting that we, you know, let's pick what we want to work on and make sure we get done through the year.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. And I would, I would imagine a vision or mission setting meeting would be longer than a couple of hours on a Tuesday afternoon or Monday at, whenever we did it. I think that's a much more in-depth process than what we went through in February. It was to develop a work plan for 2017. And then we incorporated a lot of those items into the budget guidelines this year as well. We highlighted some of those work items that we wanted to take on. And I'm very pleased, frankly, with the process, the progress that we've made on, on most of the items on that list. Still have a lot of work to do, of course. It's an ongoing process. Particular, one of the items that I always think about, and this is a hat tip to Commissioner Netherland, is having more equitable service throughout the county. That's an ongoing issue, but that was something that was highlighted in that work plan. So I think, you know, certainly more work to do, but a process that I hope continues beyond 2017.
I just wanted to put out one other correction. Our sheriff's staff does, is heavily involved in union negotiations, and so their participation is key in how we negotiate and what we negotiate. And I just wanted to just highlight that it's frequently mentioned that the sheriff has nothing to do with the contracts that are signed, but he does in fact sign the contract.
I do want to throw in one piece I forgot, Oyster Fest. I will be also working and attending at least one booth, if not two. So, we may bump into each other there as well. Although, I didn't hear, are any of you guys working a booth?
I'll be there all weekend. I'll be there from Wednesday night on. I've taken on the responsibilities in training this year, and then full-time next year of the RV and the camping. So, we'll be, I won't be able to go to Oyster Funk. I'll be checking in campers. We have up to four.
Why didn't you do that? Just curious.
Because I wanted to do my part. But we have over 400 campers already registered, and of course, more will come. It is, it is quite extensive. It's a little city up there.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move that we adjourn.
One second. We're adjourned. Everybody have a good day.